On your cue. All right, everybody. Thank you all for coming in. The City of Cottula City Council will meet for a regular meeting on Thursday, February eighth, two thousand twenty-four at seven P M. At the Alexander Convention Center Conference Room two ninety north I H thirty-five X is road Cottula, Texas. This is an open meeting, subject to open meeting laws of the state of Texas. Roll call. I believe we have Mister Alejandro Garcia. Did he? Did he call in, Mr. Secretary? Do to work. I need a first motion to excuse Mister Garcia for motion invade my Mister Zartucci second by Mister Rodriguez. All in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carries. Will everybody please join me on the pledge of allegiance?
Let's just look back on the United States and to the Republic before we just say one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Citizens to be heard. City Council cannot discuss any present issue nor may any action may be taken on any given issue at this time. And I believe there is no citizens comments today. Thank you for that, Mr. Secretary. Moving on to item number five, Deplimentary and Committee Reports. I'm gonna go with accounting first. So Mister Garcia, if you wanna go over the accounting on Deplimentary and Committee Reports, please.
Good evening, Council. First report ups, the sales tax, February, something to get back on the right track with collect two hundred and five thousand, two hundred and thirty-six dollars, which pretty good, which we kind of expected going forward. On the next page, it's gonna be the hotel tax collection. For the month of January, we collected one hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And I believe that the the audit was is still in progress right now. We haven't seen any further results or any conclusion on that. So once we get that information, we'll get that to you all.
What company doing the audit?
I don't have the name in front of me, sir, but I can get that.
It's UniCode.
No, no, the.
Hotel, hotel.
Hotel, motel.
That's solid.
I'll tell you in a minute. I've got an email.
All right, appreciate it.
If y'all go to page six, I'll give you all the general fund totals. The total revenue for the general fund is nine hundred and seventy-three thousand, seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars. Total expenditures eight hundred and thirty-seven, six hundred and fifty-nine dollars, which is a net income of one hundred and thirty-six thousand, sixty-nine dollars. Page nine is gonna be the water and sewer total. Water sewer total year to date, total revenue, five hundred and forty-seven thousand, five hundred and forty-one dollars. Total expenditures, five hundred and thirteen, nine hundred and forty-seven dollars, which is a net income of three thirty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-three dollars. And page eleven is gonna be the municipal gas farm. Total revenue year to date for the municipal gas farm, total revenue is gonna be two hundred and twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and thirty-four. Total expenditure, seventy-nine thousand, nine hundred and seventy-nine dollars, which is a net income of one hundred and forty-seven, three hundred and fifty-four dollars. On page thirteen, we're gonna find solid waste. Yes, sir.
It is seventy-nine thousand. It is for parts related to the city needs.
Solid waste.
Now for gas.
Gas department.
Yes, sir.
Solid waste totals, total revenue year to date, two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars. Total expenditures, three hundred and thirteen, eight hundred and fifty-four dollars, which is a net loss of thirty-four thousand, seven hundred and thirty dollars.
Mister Garcia, do we include any expenditures on the the pairs of vehicles that this?
Any, any, any repairs of vehicles for this report will be in January. So if there's any current ones, you won't see that until the next meeting after this month is completed. So the last reported catch is gonna be a check register for the month of January, or excuse me, the month of, yeah, for the month of January. Are there any questions?
No, sir. I've got one question.
Yes, sir.
I saw your report on page eighteen. It's on the fellow civic center.
Yes, sir.
Are we in the red?
No, sir. We're, we're for year to date for the civic center, we're gonna be under three thousand.
Is it gonna due to the electricity usage and all that?
Yes, sir. So, I mean, we're just not, I mean, it's three thousand dollars. Maybe we're gonna get a better month, you know, in the near future. So maybe it'll catch up.
Okay.
But from right now, from year to day, we're under three thousand.
Okay, thank you.
How about on the hotel motel tax? Are the motel and hotels up to date?
Uh, I believe that the, there are a few that are delinquent, that have been delinquent for some time. I'm not too sure how they're reaching out, but I know that they are, I think Jen is in contact with them.
Yes, and also I received the email from the auditors, specifically, there's one hotel in town that they're attempting to do an audit on, and they have no paperwork at all. So at that point, when that happens, there's gonna be an estimation of what we expect their hot tax to be, and then they're gonna be billed appropriately. Um, this specific hotel has not paid hot tax since the owner took over the hotel.
How long has that been?
It's been a year now, at least. So we're, yeah, we're, we're working on it, though.
David, is it, did, do they change names, these hotels?
That one did not. It stayed the same.
One more question.
Any other question?
No, sir. Councilman, any other questions from Mister Garcia?
No.
Mister Garcia, thank you very much for that report.
Oh, thank you.
Moving on to municipal court.
Yeah, so municipal court report, um, the same as it's been for the last three months. There's no payments collected. There has been no citation issued and no court help, help for anyone this month.
Mister Zartucci, the name of the company that does the hotel audits is Avenue? Adrian's, have you ever been dealing with a long time? I think they changed the name of their company. It's Avenue Insights and Analytics. They used to be UniCode. And they're out, they're out of Houston. I think they just do paper audits, right?
That's it, yeah. Yeah, they will then, yeah, they just do paper audit. They're just, yeah.
So all of this stuff's supposed to be reported to the state. So if they're not paying us tax, they're not paying the state.
That's right.
Tax either.
Correct.
So which means the state hasn't done it.
That's right.
It's not only do we collect the taxes, the taxes.
Right.
Correct. So the state is gonna be sending us some kind of information. Well, yeah, yeah, they'll go after them. This audit here is independent audit, and we'll have to enforce it through a lawsuit, is what it end up happening.
Was that at one time and then pay it.
Right.
Right away. You could actually like go lock the.
Go lock the, yeah.
Put a chain. If there's no further questions, moving on to B, code compliance.
Um, Miss Bonita is at a class four code enforcement. Um, she has a report in the packet. Uh, it's really not much change from the meeting we just had two weeks ago, but it's there in the packet.
Could I ask, uh, what training is she going for?
This is for abandoned properties, demolition of abandoned properties within this town. So.
Would you be going to further trainings that you know of?
Um, at this, at this point, I don't, I'm not sure. He hasn't come to me with any further trainings.
Mister Red, I'd like to recommend an apology to Mr. Barraza. I'd like to recommend a, an apology in the paper from Mr. Barraza for her.
Okay.
To the state, please.
Understood.
All right, moving on to waste wa- water and wastewater.
Evening, Councilman Mayor. That's right. For mother January, um, seven of our examples were tested negative. Uh, we did have to do repeat samples on one. Um, and they came back negative. Our aquifer sitting at five, five hundred and twenty-six feet and point ninety-two feet. Um, the monthly demand for January was twenty-eight million, five hundred and forty-five thousand gallons with the daily average, uh, demand of nine hundred and twenty, nine hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and sixty, uh, gallons per day. We had, um, uh, the, the crews have also begun replacing the six inch line that y'all approved, uh, two months ago on the on the on the street. We also had, um, well, nine, we put it back in service, ran a few hours and it got, it was, uh, we noticed that there was a fault on the skater with the V F D. I called Peerless. Uh, we didn't, we didn't reset it. We didn't do anything because I wanted them to come out and take a look at it. And when they came out, they, this, uh, this morning, they said it, it had seized up, so they're gonna have to get a crew back out here to pull the pump and, and the motor off and see what's causing the damage.
Is that under warranty or?
Yes, sir. It should be under warranty. I mean, like I said, we only ran it a few hours. We flushed it. Um, and then we only had it in service for, the runtime was only, uh, six hours, six and a half hours. So, I mean, there, there's something going on with it. I don't know what it is, but as soon as we find out something, uh, we'll have it here for next month's meeting.
So, so also part of this here, you know, we ran it, me and Jimmy were both on site when their electrician was out there. He, he was starting it. He was fumbling with it. And when he tried to start it, the motor would just hum, shaft wouldn't move as if it was locked. So they can't, the way, the way it is all connected, they're not gonna be able to tell if it's the actual electric motor or if it's the pump they just put in. If it's the electric motor, they're gonna bring the crane, pick it up, try to run it. Um, they didn't have a mega, so he didn't make it. He could have told, been able to tell by that. So they're gonna pick it up. If it's the motor, they're gonna say that the motor is bad and we need to replace it, and they're gonna wanna charge us for it. If it's, if it's the shaft, casing, pump down hole, that's gonna be under warranty. Um, we've used Peerless for years. And I'm getting to a point personally that I think it's time to find somebody else because we've, we've had so many well problems over the years. And I think it's just time to find somebody else and get new eyes on it. Um, I had concerns about this well. Uh, they came and reworked it last year. Um, after they reworked it, um, the amps, they kept tripping or failing because of high amps. At that point, we notified them and we told them, look, something's going on. So their, like, their electrician comes back out and the, the hertz, which on the V F D, the hertz controls how fast the shaft moves, how much water it pumps. Well, they ended up lowering the hertz to where the well would produce five hundred gallons a minute. I'm like, whoa, wait a minute. You're doing that to bandit, to Band-Aid it. You didn't fix anything. You know, oh, no, no, I think it was wrong in the beginning. They're, they're giving us a lot of excuses, you know, and I really think it's time we move away. So I, I mentioned to Jimmy today that we're gonna go through this because we need the well running. So let's get them to where they have it operational. The next time anything breaks in our city, we're gonna contact somebody else.
Do you already have a company in, another company in mind or?
Yeah, so there, there's several companies. The one that comes to mind, it would be, uh, Advanced Water Wells. Um, they've been around for quite a while. We've never used them. They've came out maybe twice in the past and we just never used them. Um, it appears that they take the time to go through everything and make sure everything's operating properly and, but, but we don't know until we use them. Solanski's another one. I think he's out of Carrizo Springs. We've used him in the past.
They're out of Crystal City.
Crystal City. So, and we had, actually had good luck with him. Uh, the Buckley well, we, we lost probably four motors in four years out of their submersibles. And I asked Mister Solanski to come in and put a vertical turbine in, which is where the, the electric motor is above ground. And he did that like four years ago, and there's been no problems, nothing. So, so he's another option, too. There, there's others out there. But I really feel like, you know, they come out for these kind of repairs and they're between forty and eighty thousand dollars every time. And we just keep giving it to them. And I thi- I think it's time we do something else.
Yeah. How many wells do we have running right now?
Currently, we have three. Our fourth well, was it, uh, two years ago, Jimmy, that one there blew a hole in the outer casing?
Yes, sir.
We already had a patch on that one, um, and we abandoned that well.
That's the one next to the.
By the courthouse. Yeah, this is the one at the courthouse. The infrastructure there on the ground storage tank, high service pumps, chlorine station, nothing there is operational at this point, only because we don't have a water well. Um, last year, the council approved a twelve thousand, well, twelve thousand, eight hundred for Tetra Tech to design a bypass. So this bypass will go from the main line in, in the system in the street, and it'll run to the ground storage tank. It'll have something called a clay valve on it, which is electronic valve that can connect to our skater system. When the ground storage tank needs water, it'll fill it. When the city needs water, it'll push it back out into the system. Um, we have approved plans through T C E Q to make this happen. We just need to make it happen. Um, we've had approved plans for about two months now. Um, we need to get a parts list. Uh, staff will be able to do this job, and I'll probably be bringing the parts list to, uh, council. The clay valve is probably about fourteen thousand dollars alone by itself. So I'm gonna estimate probably twenty-five thousand dollar or deal. This will be used as a storage tank. Yeah, it will be used as a store tank. Now, also, this tank is our largest tank in town. It's a five hundred thousand gallon tank. And we're not using it, you know, and, and that hurts the community. We, we gotta get it operational. In lieu of that, um, socioeconomic survey, we talked about this the last council meetings, um, that survey is complete. Um, the median household income of people surveyed, and there's, I have a map. There's a represent- representation across the whole city of people that took this survey, went from fifty-four thousand dollars household income, which was what was in the census, to thirty-six thousand dollars, uh, household income. Um, our benefit is this. Texas Water Development Board, you know, they give loans and grants. Well, being, being that our survey came back, back at that amount, our, our grant portion now is seventy percent. Never happened before. It, it's now seventy percent. So, so theoretically, if the council approved an ordeal of twenty million dollars, fourteen million dollars of that would be a grant, and then six million would be a loan. Of, of course, we got some hurdles we have to get through to make that happen. But that money, new water well, ground storage tank for the well by the fire station, we have a three million dollar project engineered, sitting on the shelf, ready to go also for the wastewater plant. These kind of things, you know, are, are very, are needed for our community and, and we have an ability to do it at this point. Um, water is everything. You know, water is growth. You don't have the water, the people ain't coming. So, so for me, if we're having ability to do this, we do it. You know, we, we build it up. We make it secure for the community currently, and we make it secure for whoever's here in the future. You know, and I don't, I really don't think we're gonna ever see this again. So I know there was a lot of federal funds involved and, you know, that's how they had the ability to do this. Uh, generator project also, um, I had a meeting, had a meeting with Tedom, uh, Erica Bustamante and representatives from Tedom. Um, they are talking about funding the city of Cottula this summer. So, so I know this is, everything takes forever, and this is taking forever, but they are talking about funding us that two point five million dollars total grant this summer. So hopefully by next winter, we may have some generators.
David, um, I know it's, I'm just reading the government.
Yes, sir.
Item number eight, is that what we're talking about, the period is, you know?
Yes, this is the one that came to council last month, and we had the wrong well number on the agenda, and we're making that correct through ratification. That was on the well number eight. Right, we had, had it set at eight, when it was actually well nine. So we, I'm, uh, I got very excited when I heard that, you know, that, that gives us a way to fix our water system, our wastewater system and get it up to, up to par. You know, Mister, Mister D's done a lot, you know, and over the years, but there's, there's more.
There's more to do.
You know, and three wells as we grow is not gonna be sufficient. It's barely sufficient now, and, well, we're running three right now, mayor. It's barely sufficient now when you have wells breaking down. You know, you get two, and then we're starting to fumble. What are we gonna do? You know? So you get one, we're in trouble, especially in the summertime, you're not gonna keep up. So water storage recycles every twenty-four hours, you know. You have a well go down, you may have twenty-four hours before you're gonna be out. And we've been very lucky, very lucky over the years. So in the past, it was a different story. We were, we had periods where we ran out of water. We haven't had that in several years, but.
Yep. Jim, you wanna continue?
Uh, yes. Sorry, Jim.
Uh, no, it's okay. Uh, also, uh, next month, we, uh, speaking of the well, uh, on well A, we'll, we'll, we will have the, the total, uh, bring the, the total to council to ratify that. And as a, today, when we received the invoice, it was at forty-six thousand, forty-eight dollars, thirty cents, and that was for well A. That was, um, the, uh, the contractors, the V F D, uh, we already had the motor. The on, the only thing that is still missing on this invoice is the rewinding of the motor. And I, because I did see the invoice and, and I made sure, and that roughly anywhere from total fifteen thousand to rewind that motor, so.
Well, well, number eight is over by the, it's the tower out by I H thirty-five. And that one, we came two months ago, and Jimmy mentioned it in the report, that the V F D had failed and that the electric motor had failed out there, and that, that's the repair. The rewinding of the motor is that we had one spare, and we like to have one spare because these motors take thirty days to get, and we can't wait thirty days. So he will, he'll be, we'll be coming to ratify. And that's peerless again, right? That's peerless again. So on the electric motors, they send it out to companies like San Antonio Armacre, so you know, somebody to rewire.
Get it rewired.
So. Or rewind it.
Um, is there any questions on the water?
You, you, you're gonna do the wastewater also?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I only have a question after you finish.
All right. Um, on the wastewater, um, really, the only thing I have is an update on the sewer line at the airport road. Uh, we did get a call from, um, the contractors and the engineers from Tessa Tech, Pet Tech, stating that Tex dot had, um, stopped the project because the permit had expired. So, um, we reached out to, um, to Mister Martinez to go ahead and, and start a new permit so they can, uh, finish that project. All, all that was left is to back, backfill a few, uh, a few manholes on the side of the road on the right way. And they put a stop to it. So they, they, the only thing left they have to do is on Airport Road, um, from one manhole down to where they did the board. And then covering on Tex dots right away, but it stopped till we get a new permit for that.
Also, they do infrastructure now from that area.
Yes, sir. And that was, that was their excuse is that we were in their way. Uh, but.
They had about a day's worth, day's worth of work left to backfill.
I have a question on wastewater. Um, how are your lift station doing? Are they doing okay?
Yes, sir. Um, so far, we, um, I'm, they've been doing good. Uh, usual just grease, um.
Still have white pieces also. Do you have white pieces?
Yes, sir. Not, not as bad, but I mean, that's one thing that's never gonna, never gonna change.
Yeah.
On the, on the extension on the wastewater at the sewer plant, if we get that grant, how big is it gonna be extended or?
Um, we were looking at, um, putting in the bar screen, rebuilding the, uh, one of the clarifiers that has been down for a while. Um, it was upgrade to electrical pan, uh, upgrading the electrical panels and adding, uh,
I think we did it for a few months.
Uh, new drying beds.
How many bar screens do we have in place?
We have, uh, two augers that are right above the, uh, the aerators where the, uh, mixed liquor is, gets aerated, where it gets air. Those are the only two that we have.
This bar screen, the main lift station has three pumps in it, eight hundred and forty gallons a minute. Um, this bar screen, you got the lift station, then you have a wet well, which was the old lift station that sits behind it. The main trunk, which runs down Mustang Creek into the wastewater plant, goes into this lift station. All the wipes, trash, debris, noodle wrappers, every, everything that comes in goes into there, and there's no way to take it out. So it builds up into that lift station. Those pumps pump that out plus part of that trash, and it goes up to mechanical bar screens on top of the aeration basins, which are the, the large basins that are in the front of the wastewater plant. Um, over the years, we've replaced a lot of pumps there because of that. Uh, we also pay, uh, uh, a vacuum truck to come out three, four times a year to clean out that lift station. The mechanical bar screen, they're, they're talking about, uh, digging a trench, and that wet well in the back, putting that bar screen down in there, and then it'll, it'll come all the way up, and then it'll be a dumpster, and everything will go in the dumpster. So, so we would hope that we'd have less failures at that lift station.
With adding that.
With adding that bar screen. The, the second, the second engineered project is a, a clarifier. We have a center, uh, we have three clarifiers. Uh, the one in the middle has been down for several years. It's, the metal that's in it is just totally rusted away. Um, it's not leveled, so you, a clarifier's gotta be precise on level and all that because what Jimmy was referring to, the liquor, it will do something called short circuit, and it'll shoot up and out and then to the river. And we put it out of service because of that. It needs a full rehabs. The third thing was is the, the concentration of liquor, which is in the aeration basins. It would be, uh, extra drying beds. It's the beds all the way down at the bottom of the plants. Um, in the wintertime, we struggle. We, we're currently using polymers. We're doing everything we can, but, but every, every winter, we struggle. And I, and in the past, we've had issues where we've had high ammonia, we've had different things, and we've had violations because of it. And, and, and the main reason was either, you know, the, not the ability to waste out what we need to waste out, which is getting the liquor out, or just the other things that are broken, but the main thing, it's been the drying beds.
Yeah.
So that, that would be your third portion of that one project. That project is estimated to be somewhere around three, three and a half million dollar project. And we engineered it a year and a half ago and is sitting on the shelf waiting for funding. So.
David, would that, would that include, uh, how well is the sewer plant secured? Light, light, lighting wise?
So, so as far as lighting, I think it was twenty-fourteen. There was a contractor that came in and redid all the lights under a grant. Um, I believe it was associated to the generator grant given for the lift stations and wastewater plant. The generators were completed in twenty-eleven, and then there was valves that were completed twenty-twelve, lighting was twenty-fourteen. So, so it currently has sufficient lighting. Uh, the grant also covered fencing, so pieces of the fencing that was damaged, they replaced that also. Now, he does have switch on those lights, so maybe that, you know, a lot of them we keep off.
Okay.
Like up on the equipment and stuff, because there's really no reason unless we get up there. So that may be why it doesn't seem.
But we have sufficient property for the extension.
The, the wastewater plant currently has twenty-nine acres. So, yeah, and we're using maybe, what, ten of it? So.
Any other questions for Jimmy?
No, sir.
Jimmy, will you be doing the, uh, gas, uh, report as well?
Yes, sir. Um, on the gas, uh, we had seven gas leaks that were reported and repaired. Um, we had a total of sixty-seven locates for the month of January. Um, I, we did not have, receive the, um, invoice yet for, uh, January, so, um, That's still the same, uh. Price and the cubic feet for, uh, from December. Because we haven't received it yet and I believe that usually comes in around a fifteen or so.
You want to talk about the gas leak that we've had reports of up by Gardendale?
Yes, sir, um. In Gardendale, over by, by the, uh, railroad tracks, we've had, um, we've, I've been called in, in the middle of the night. Uh, gas leaks, we've had crews go out there and I know one time at two in the morning. Uh, they went up and down, they searched, they couldn't find anything. We've probed holes in the ground where our gas lines are going. There, there's nothing, there's no, uh, odor coming out that, that our machines will detect. The only, and I've had, uh, I've spoken with, uh, Mr. Juan Velazquez and we had gone out there one day. And we could not find any, any leaks. The only thing we can think of is the gas, the gas plants around there that are. I guess when they purge, that odor comes out and it does come out strong. And we're, we're the ones that get the calls for that. But, uh, we have gone out there, like I said, we checked our lines, we probed them, uh, on both sides of, of the road. And we have not located any leaks.
That, that main line of natural gas goes through the side of the railroad tracks, right?
Yes, sir.
On the east side?
Yes, sir, and it, I mean, if there was, if there was a gas leak. We would be able to tell as well because it's everything around there would be dead, grass would be dead, uh, you know, so. Uh, like I said, it's not a gas leak on our side and it's just the, the gas plants when they purge their valves.
Not only that, I think you're, you're correct, uh, I think when they do the digging, uh, cleaning up their lines on the gas line, it releases that odor.
Yes, sir.
And there's some plants there close on the east side of the railroad tracks.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. In a case like that, David, I mean, Jimmy, uh, engineer name Jimmy, Jimmy now. The deal is, uh, in a case like that, when you have a problem. That they call you. To in- investigate the, the issue. And it turns out to be an issue pertaining to the, or, I mean, the gas company, who's liable? Who do, who do hold? The road commission is going to hold some, somebody liable, right?
Yes. They would, um.
In a case like, if it happens that way.
They would hold an investigation and they would be sure to determine where it was coming from. Um, and if it is coming from the plant, they would be able to determine that. They have sniffers and we have sniffers and different things that can determine that. And they've used that equipment out there and it just doesn't show that there's a leak.
Yeah, because we, we also have, uh, this little probe that we'll put in, in the ground and we'll hammer it down. And we'll, right, right above the, the gas lines and we'll put the sniffer in there and that's why I'm saying we've done that and there's no gas leaks that are coming from that. And it's not picking up any, any, uh, of the odor, so. Uh, is there any other questions?
Yes, sir.
No. Any other questions on the gas?
Thank you very much for those reports. Streets and parks.
Thomas. Good evening, Mayor, city council members, Mr. Wright. Uh, street personnel crew assisted the parks and recreation and removing Christmas trees and decorations. From the Plaza Florita and the Veterans Park. I would also like to commend the, uh, street and parks, uh, the recreation. Crew for doing a outstanding job in the flower beds, maintaining the flower beds, the. Venus Park, Plaza Florita, Veterans Park, so they're doing a good job. Crew of two and they're doing, doing an awesome job. I wanted to commend them. Uh, also, we started posting signs on, uh, no trucks allowed in neighborhoods within intersections of the city easements. Uh, we also utilized the Skidster and loader, loader, front loading loader tractor to remove burning debris from the city easement on Martinez Street.
So you put, so you put truck signs already?
Yes, we're, we're starting to do that.
Oh, you're starting, okay.
There's quite a few already from what I can see.
Yeah, we just ran out of plants, so now I've got to order some plants for the guys.
Okay.
But we're going to continue putting those.
Excellent. Thank you.
Uh, it was due to a mobile house, uh, that caught on fire. We also concealed a washout with Caliche where the road bed was roded away. caused by the rain on Mozalet Street, we fixed that one up. And, uh, we also utilized a John Deere tractor with shredder to mow grass behind the old fire station and. City-owned properties.
So, so I have maybe a couple of things here real quick. Um, I've asked Mr. Pena, uh, to design. A template of a release form for the city of Katula. Um, it's a proper, private property release form. Um, right now, we have, we do have some requests, you know, we have burnt down RVs and different things in town. And we don't have the ability to do anything about it. The, the owner of these properties though could write a letter to the city and it could come to the council and you all could approve it. Um, but Mr. Pena is currently making a form, uh, for that, uh, demolition of houses. Um, I think the way it's worked in the past in the demolition of houses is that Robbie's given a price verbal. And they've come to city hall and they've paid for it. With no paperwork in the middle. So, so we're creating a form to make, make that, you know, official and written down. Um, we've also had, I guess, and there's one specific too that we're working with right now where. A couple of years ago, I believe that a sewer line was put on private property. And now the sewer line has an issue and the customer wants it fixed. Um, I have to fix it. Because I have nothing in writing saying that she allowed us to do it. Um, and these are things that we're running into, uh, sewer backups, you know, we, we do as a courtesy, we'll go to a person's property. And we'll use our sewer, sewer machine jetter to clean out the sewer line on the outside of the house and we've done that for years and years without a release. When we break something, we're liable. You know, because we're not putting nothing in writing. Um, he's working on that currently and, uh, do, do I need an approval for that or can we just implement it?
Yeah, I've been, um, thinking about how to, as I said, I probably, probably need to have an ordinance or something.
Yeah, it's amending the ordinance and then you're going to need the approval from, uh, council.
Done in the past.
That's the way we've done it on the past, yes.
They pay us or sometimes we put a lien on the property with their consent. You know, in, in case it's ever sold, you know, city gets paid, so.
Yeah, this also, um, allows us to help the elderly with, with that, they have no one, you know, uh, with, um. Whenever there's high winds, uh, trees fall down in their yards and.
Bulk trash.
Yeah, and they don't, or bulk trash by the way as well. I mean, um, there's, there's a lot of benefits and a lot of ways for the city to help the elderly and. This is the way by getting this, this, uh, uh, done. You know, so. Thank you for that, Steve. Tom, I have a question for you, uh, the status on the installing of street signs, do we have street signs that we can install at this time? There's the old ones that we can paint and reinstall them?
You mean the street name signs?
Yes, sir.
Uh, I don't have any of those, but we can, we can order some.
Okay.
We can get with Mr. Wright and see what we can do.
We've been talking about ordering some new ones for years, I think we're, we're going to budget this year for them.
Yes, sir, actually, we, we did.
We did already.
Did already budget for that. Um, I think, I think the way we do this is we go and do quadrants of the city. Year after year until we complete, uh, complete and replace every. Uh, another issue that, that I, I would like to bring to council. Is, um, streetlights. We have a contract currently with AAP and we can replace a street light for a hundred and thirty-five dollars from the old Lumen. To an LED light.
LED lights.
I think that that's something else. I think we calculated it'd be like sixty thousand dollars to do the entire city. And then the savings, the savings would be twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars a year to the city. You know, it's just a matter of getting the funds available, city funds available to do it because I wouldn't be able to get a grant to do it. Not on this specific one.
Could we do it in twenty thousand dollar phases?
Yeah, that's probably what we're going to have to do.
I think that would work a lot better.
It didn't, um, the don't be to, to burn it up, right?
Sure, yeah.
Well, some fire license set up that goes every night.
It'll brighten it up and get, cover more area, light up more area. Yeah. Illuminate more.
So, so part of that contract too, if, if the old light burns out, the socket burns out, they replace it for free. So that, that's part of it, but if we want to speed it along, we can pay the hundred and thirty-five dollars and start replacing.
Start replacing.
And then we get the savings in the light bill. The, the city pays the light bill for all the lights. So every month we get a bill, a pretty stout bill for lights.
And maybe lights is going to save more money.
Yeah.
LEDs are more efficient.
Going back on the, on, on, on the signs on this, on the streets for. For the eighteen where you're not to go through certain streets, it's going to be enforcing.
Law enforcement.
I, I have, um, so I have spoke to the judge about this. I have not spoke to the sheriff. The judge was going to talk to the sheriff about it. The, right now, nobody. I mean, if the sheriff's department does it or DPS does it, that's going to be it. Um, I did have an issue that I want, was going to bring to council also about hiring a part-time marshal to be able to do these kind of things. Um, in the future, I would like to bring that back to council. I'm not looking for a full-blown police department. I'm looking for a staff member that may be part-time or full-time, single employee marshal. That can do these kind of things. Well, he's going to obviously have to work between eight and five and, you know, all those kind of issues, but. We, we contacted the state on this, um. They told us that in nineteen ninety-seven, the city had a permit to do this and. Currently, we could do it again for a thousand dollar application fee. Uh, we'd have to purchase a small evidence safe. And we'd have to get in a, in a local agreement for the radio system, the digital radio system that the sheriff's department has. And we could make it possible. Um, you know. You, for a long time, obviously, we know the city doesn't have the money to finance a full-fledged police department, but we could start somewhere. You know, and, and for me, starting at the bottom and doing a little something is better than doing nothing. And, and that's just how I feel about it.
Another question on the citations.
Mm-hmm.
If it's done by the county or, or state. You want to go to a JP County, JP or municipal?
It, it more than likely wouldn't go to us.
We don't have, we don't have an interlocal agreement, so it would go over there just.
I have been told verbally that we would get the tickets, but I, there's nothing in writing, so I, I, you don't know. Now, if we had a marshal on staff here, it would go directly to our municipal judge and it would be filed through. The city.
Through the city.
And then we would receive the citation and the state would receive their portion of.
We've had agreements in the past where we, where we were paying them and they're.
Right.
And they were supposed to be bringing, they never did. They didn't bring it to the city. And.
They brought some, but not, not the.
Not much you could do with it, um. And it had all of their requirements for the Tlets and using the radios. Uh, you also have to an agreement in case you need to arrest somebody.
Correct.
Yeah.
You know, and the county has to take them. You can't take a prisoner and the county's an hour after they.
Yeah.
The sheriff has to put him in jail if he's arrested. But, um. You know, those are. Things that, that the city certainly can do, it would help. Um. You know. Is it going to solve all your problems?
No.
But at least you have a.
Starting, starting.
Really, what a, what a marshal really is, is a bailiff for your municipal.
Right.
That's really what they're supposed to do. They serve warrants, they go out and pick up people.
Mm-hmm.
But I mean, if they're a law enforcement, they can pull somebody out, you know, I mean. But then you start a whole other can of worms, you know, start doing that.
So, so the other issue too was code enforcement when it comes to having this in, in effect. Right now, a code enforcement officer can go out to the city and issue citation. And, uh, give it to the person, say, here's your court date, here's everything. And that person looks at their citation and goes like that. And what are we to do about it? Because we have nobody to enforce it or pick it up, so nobody goes to the judge. You know, and, and I'm not saying you go gung ho and just start citing everybody and send them to the judge. But, but at least when people know you have the ability to do it, then they may start abiding by the rule.
Right.
You know, and right now, we just don't have that ability.
So right now, do we have the code enforcer up to date in order to do that?
Her, uh, yes, Juanita, yes, she's, she's licensed already.
Licensed.
Yes.
So she's not lacking nothing right now?
No, she can, she has a basic code enforcement or code, yeah, code enforcement license. There's one higher, but with what she has, she can issue citations.
Yeah, she just got it, what, uh, you, you said November twenty-second or so?
Around there, yes.
So she's had it for a little bit over two months, so.
I mean, you can issue.
And, uh, uh, of course, throughout, throughout the course of time, she'll get more certifications.
That's right.
And she'll get better at, at her job as well. Start enforcing more things. David, I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
Is it mandatory that we have, uh, how, I mean, street numbers on the addresses? Is it mandatory?
I, I've asked this in the past and I was told that it's not. I'm going to say it plain, that it's not the responsibility of the city.
Okay.
And that we couldn't even purchase the numbers for the house, but there are different types of programs that will do it. And I believe the city of Katula had a program probably a little bit before my time here. And they stored the numbers at city hall and they, they, you know, got the word out and some people picked them up and some didn't.
Okay.
Where it's at now, I, I couldn't tell you, but there is a way.
I think that we need to consider, reconsider that, that issue for the safety of the public and for the, for, um. Of course, I know our responsibility is to protect the, the citizens of Katula.
Yes.
The safety and of course, also to have been in, in close relation with EMS.
So that, that also, um, we've been, I've actually been talking to the fire chief quite a bit and. Yeah, we've got different issues too with that we're going to be talking about.
Okay.
Um, especially with our hotels and the elevators in our hotels and the fire code. For our hotels, because there isn't anybody really enforcing that at this point either. I got a lot of things I'm bringing, so we're, we're working on it every day, uh, really.
Coming back to the street, uh, departments, um. I know that the county has some projects in the city right now, honestly, some streets. Hickey Street, Southwest Lane and the one close, that's around in areas.
Yes.
Does the city have an inspector or can they have any say-so on that project?
It's within the city, the city owns the property, we can have say-so on it. Um, the thing is, is that this, this is an engineered project. Uh, the council approved this project prior to me taking over and at this point, I don't believe that can be changed. Um, there have been instances where we've had complaints that people can't get into their driveways and things like that. And I've called the appropriate people at that point to have something done. Um, I can't say that they've done something every time, but, but we've done our due diligence or we, I know, we've taken dirt out to places and covered driveways as best we could.
And the reason, the reason I ask because the city, uh, the people from the city. Um, blame the city for these projects.
Yes.
Not knowing that it is a county project.
Correct, that's a twelve million dollar.
Project is ending, it's complete, then it's added over to the city.
Yes.
For ownership, so whatever ends up.
We have to do.
There's, it's going to be ended up with us. And, uh, there's another one that I would like to see if there will be a grant for the future. For that drainage problem that is in Hickey Street, Southwest Lane.
So, Hickey, Hickey, Goodwin, Southwest Lane, there, there's actually drainage, more drainage going in currently up and down the roads on those three streets. Um, the, the, it's being done, there's an issue, which is our issue is that we don't have easements for that drainage. So we will have to come back and get the easements for that drainage, um, but they are putting it in.
But there is, I believe there's a drainage going through private property, am I correct?
Yeah, from Southwest Lane.
That's the one that has to be replaced.
That's right, so they, they actually diverted the drainage and those lines are not going to be used. From Southwest Lane, it used to cut under to Goodwin and Hickey and it would run to all the way down to Botwell and down along the tracks of the river. They, the, the, the retainment pond at the Martinez Park across the street. Everything that's coming down Southwest Lane is now going that way, so they've, they've, uh, they've omitted that line that's running through private property. Um, Hickey Street, it, it would run down Hickey and then is it. Davenport, I believe it's Davenport, it runs down Davenport to the, to the tracks and out to the river.
So Goodwin's will be in good conditions after.
Yes, Goodwin, Goodwin, as far as drainage, you have a street issue there.
Correct.
So you're, you're not going to be in a good condition no matter what they do.
Correct, but there is a drain to be installed there for the future.
Well, there's always been plans, there's always been plans.
I don't know that yet.
Yeah, there's a possibility we can get a grant out there somewhere.
There's a possibility for streets, it's really hard though to get a grant. There, there's actually not many. Now. A study of the city's drainage is something that we are actually working on also. And that's going to be the starting point or the precursor through Tedom to be able to get grants. And, and in my mind, I see that, um, we go through the study, we apply for a grant for X amount of dollars. And we justify curbs. As drainage in the streets and maybe we can get it funded that way. But, but I don't know that yet.
But not streets, probably not.
Yeah, the streets are not going to get funded through a.
There's no grants for streets.
And for, for, for the future. I know the county provided this money for this, funds for this project. Can we, the city have any say-so on the widening of the streets? Because of Hickey Street.
In the fut- in the future, in the future, yes, because we approved the plans.
Yeah.
So, so we were privy to it.
Mm-hmm.
At that time.
Correct.
I agree. I see some roads, I see peckles, I see Hickey. It looks too tight.
Yeah.
You know, one side, on the right side, you got all this extra property now that could have been roped. I see it.
Correct.
You know, it, but it was approved prior.
Yeah.
You know.
No other questions?
You're good. Thank you, Robbie.
Thank you, Robbie.
Robbie.
Stand atation. Mr. Martinez.
Really, mayor, council members. Right. My Monday report for the month of January, what's in your package? Um, we had thirty-one trips, thirty to the landfill, one to the metal. Uh, twenty-four compacters for six hundred and nine thousand four hundred and forty pounds of trash collected in general at the transport station, six forty-yarders, uh, one hundred and eleven thousand five hundred and sixty pounds, and the metal that was taken to Corizo was six thousand nine hundred and sixty. Uh, there's not much change since I gave my annual a month leading forth, uh, a couple of weeks ago. Um, trucks are wo, working minor issues here and there, you know, um, sometimes, uh, where I, I'm able to fix them and get it done, and sometimes I have to take them to rush, but other than that, uh, everything is operational. The transport station is very good and.
Mr. Martinez, is your sweeper still up and running or?
The sweeper is semi-operational.
Okay.
I'm actually trying to save this last life, hopefully for the Waha.
Okay.
I'm gonna try to see if I can do a couple of weeks prior to the Waha hookup and cross my fingers that hopefully it'll last.
It'll last the entire day to finish what you need to finish up?
Hopefully, by after the Waha, you, you'll have a new piece of equipment to, to use.
Well, we're working on a new one, so hopefully it'll come together very soon for you. Councilman, any questions for Mr. Martinez?
No, sir.
Not at this time. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Martinez, thank you.
Councilman.
Animal control?
We had a foreign engagement, mayor.
Now, did you have a the time to review the, um, animal control report?
Yes, sir.
Any questions on that?
No, sir.
Not at this time. That's all. Well, Main Street, do we have any report on Main Street? Probably not, right?
Um, no, the only report I'm gonna give to the Main Street is that, uh,
Fourth of July thing?
Yeah, Fourth, well, Fourth of July, we talked about it last meeting, but we are gonna start advertising for the position again. That, and I think that's the only report that I have right now.
Thanks. Excellent.
So, Ms. Bianca has the, has the ad already and should be posted.
Excellent. Moving on to item number six, approval of minutes, January twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-four. City secretary, any changes on the minutes? Councilman, did you have a chance to review the minutes?
Yes, sir.
You did have a chance to review the minutes. I seek a first motion to approve item number six.
Aye.
Aye.
First motion made by Mr. Zatucha, second by Mr. Rodriguez. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Moving on to item number seven, discussion of possible action on a resolution, uh, approving a public, uh, property finance contract in the amount not to exceed five hundred thousand dollars for the procurement of a new street sweeper and vehicle with municipal use, directing the mayor to endorse and the resolution submitted by Capital Finance Corporation, attached as, as exhibit A, here to and other, uh, lender documents evidencing the indebtedness, declaring a public purpose, providing a repellent, providing for severability, incorporating recitals, and declaring an effective date.
Um, mayor, council, this one here is, uh, equipment that the city is looking to purchase for this fiscal year. Um, I've mentioned in prior meetings that we had a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars available in capital improvement. Um, government capital is a company that we've used several times, year after year, purchasing different equipment, backhoes and different dump trucks, trash trucks. Um, and
They're on our buy board, right?
Yes, so the, the quotes will be on the buy board yet. So, we, um, had a conversation with them and that they're, they're pretty adept at helping the city of Cautula. And if you can see here, they have, uh, for the five hundred thousand dollar issue, they can go three, four, five years at the percentage rate showed and the payment showed. Um, our capital improvement, I think, is a hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars for this year. Um, I feel that maybe we should do a five-year payment plan. I would probably recommend that. Um, we would not have to make our first payment until the next fiscal budget next year, so, which would help us out. Um, the equipment that I was looking to purchase is, uh, a street sweeper at two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, six hundred and twenty-one. That, that was actually the lowest-priced street sweeper. Um, when we went to TML, we actually saw it there, and it was a very nice unit. Um, the brushes, the brushes, there's an arm on the front of it, and the brush will go out and turn to where there's, when there's grass growing up in the street, it'll cut it. So that it'll also clean that and you won't have grass growing in the streets. Um, we got a quote from Elgin, uh, three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. That's the next level up. And then the Timco, which is the unit we currently own, and I think we've had for maybe six or seven years now.
For, for a year?
Yes.
Yeah.
Eleven years, okay. Okay. That one was over three hundred and sixty thousand dollars for that one. Um, we're also looking to purchase a GMC Sierra twenty-five hundred, which was the lowest-priced vehicle between Ford and GMC, even though we went for a buy board, which is the government, the government-backed quote. We still got multiple quotes. GMC was cheaper on the truck. Uh, we're also looking for a thirty-five hundred HD utility truck, which is gonna be, gonna have toolboxes and everything that you need for the water department. And then a Ford Explorer, which is a mid-sized SUV at thirty-eight thousand dollars. Um, that one there will be used for the office. The actual office car that we have now, it was gonna pass it to code enforcement. And we would, we would proceed.
You mentioned, you mentioned three vehicles. One is for the water department and the other one was
For the streets.
Or three, and water force.
Correct. Well, code enforcement's gonna get the Toyota Corolla that we have at City Hall currently.
The, the gray one?
Yeah, the one she's currently driving.
Okay. And the other one is for the offices.
Yeah, the other one would be for office use or when we, yeah, training, and when we go to TML, we can, we can drive versus flying, cause not everyone likes flying, things like that.
Uh, I mentioned to
Elevators.
I mentioned to, to Mr. Artie, how you can send me a picture of the sweeper.
Okay. Yeah, I, I have it in my email. I'll forward it to, if he doesn't have it, I'll forward it to him.
Well, this consists also with the, the amount of price that they're selling that sweeper. Would that consist also of training the employee, how to use it?
Yes, hundred percent free training.
Well, for one individual, how many?
Uh, as many as we wanna train.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they'll make the trip down here.
Correct.
Just like they did with that other sweeper. And if we need more training, we can call them, they'll come down for free also.
Right.
And the warranty on that?
Uh, it's gonna be a standard one-year warranty, like all equipment, every, everything that we've ever had has been a one-year warranty. So they did, they did offer a maintenance package. Um, I haven't seen pricing on that yet, but they did offer a maintenance package.
Maybe we should take a look at that as well.
Yes. The other thing that they, that the sweeper companies offer is, uh, four-year leases. But doing the math, it doesn't add up. On a four-year lease on the Elgin, it was two hundred and eighty thousand dollars for a lease, and I'm buying this machine for them, or the city, you know, it just doesn't add up.
Yeah. It probably be a good idea, like the mayor said, get an extended warranty on that. One year flies real fast.
Right.
If there's no further questions or discussion on item number second, uh, seven, I seek, uh, first motion to approve item number seven.
Approve it.
First motion made by Mr. Zatucha, second by Mr. Ayala. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Moving on to item number eight, discussion of possible action to ratify an energy expense paid to peerless equipment in the amount of forty thousand fifty-one dollars for well number nine.
This is the one from last month that we just made up, correct?
Excellent. First motion made by Mr. Zatucha, second by Mr. Rodriguez. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Moving on to item number nine, discussion of possible action to approve a letter of intent for additional airport improvements. For that, I think, uh, Mr. Page, would you like to say a few words on item number nine?
That's a letter that's requested by Techstar Aviation when they are preparing to expense some money on improvement. It just spells out the items that were asked for at this time. Techstar approached us, actually, and said there's money available this fiscal year that didn't realize would be available. How they came to that conclusion, I don't know. But it means there's about seven or eight hundred thousand dollars this year that, that is available to us. And that's ninety ten money, ninety percent state money and ten percent local money. And the first things that we're trying to go for initially, the greatest priority is a little bit more parking area for more airplanes to stay on the ramp during hunting season. And the secondary thing is to widen the taxiway on the turns. The airplanes that are using the taxiway now are so large that their rear wheels come real close to dragging off into the dirt on the inside of the turn. A trailer, pulling a trailer. So we're trying to make that wider. We've had a request this year and several phone conversations with DC about them wanting to use our airport with a Boeing Business Jet. That's a Boeing seven thirty-seven for official travel into Cautula. The, the taxiway was the issue that, that kept them from coming here. They went to Laredo instead. But anyway, that, they were real excited that we were planning on fixing the taxiway.
This, this is a very good thing, you know, it brings a lot of business. A lot of people don't, don't know what our, the airport's main reason for existing and it brings a lot of, uh, companies and hunters and all these people that are interested in, in other businesses and, and things of that nature. And it's, and it's, uh, very good that they approached us. I mean, usually when you need money, you approach them.
Yes.
And I think that's a very good thing. And I, I think they really like the way we've been doing business and you've been doing business at the airport. And I think they, they like what we've done so far with it.
And, and for the airport, one of the things for us also is the bigger the plane that lands at the airport, the more money we're eligible to get in grants. And, and by widening taxiway, that puts, makes us available to have bigger planes. You know, I, I think, what was it, last year, we, I learned about this when we were doing the master plan, uh, for the airport. It was really interesting how, how it operates and how they determine how places get money. You know, and it, it's really a matter of one large plane landing, and all of a sudden, you're open up to a lot more fun.
A lot more, yeah.
So little things like this will make that available to us.
So these monies that they're trying to give that's out money for the airport, or do we have to give money back to them?
So, so the grant is ninety percent, ten percent is, uh, local community funds. Um, there is oil pipeline, gas pipeline going through the airport, so we do get royalties. There's a specific account for those royalties. Um, the last three months, the city has received a forty-eight thousand dollar check, a twenty-five thousand dollar check, and just this week, I received, uh, another seventeen thousand dollar check on top of a nineteen hundred dollar check. So that account had, right, that's right. So it had already had a hundred and twenty thousand in the account.
So the, so the, uh, the account was, was probably established back in two thousand twelve
Yeah.
or thirteen, and, um, Mr. Doyleina came up with the idea of keeping those funds at the airport and opening its own account. That way, uh, anything that goes in there just builds up the account for any improvements that, uh, the city, uh, like the South County Airport needs.
You have to use those funds.
Again, they stay there.
Because of those.
FAA requirement.
Right.
Right.
Now, the, the, also, the other aspect is, is that it is the Cautula, the South County Airport.
Yes.
So, so we, our responsibility generally is fifty percent, and then we would approach the county for the other fifty.
And we've been, the, the county's been very receptive on improvement that we've done together. They've helped us out real good.
Yes.
And, uh, that's why we, the name of the airport is, uh, what is it? Cautula, the South County Airport.
Correct.
That's what it is, so.
I'm okay with it.
I second that motion.
Thank you, Mr. Page, for that. Uh, item number nine, I seek a first motion. First motion was made by Mr. Zatucha, second by Mr. Rodriguez. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Moving on to item number ten, discussion of possible action on a request submitted by Sergeant J.D. Rodriguez, requesting for permission to use the Alexander Convention Center Museum with fee rate on February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-four for the Del Rio District EDAF meeting. First motion was made by Mr. Uh, Ayala, second by Mr. Zatucha. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Uh, all opposed, say nay. That was already. Motion passes. Moving on to item number eleven, discussion of possible action to accept the Economic Development Strategic Plan finalized by Arias Consulting. Ernie?
Good evening, mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Page.
Thank you, Mr. Page.
Mr. Wright, and yes, it's the time, we know it's getting late. I'll be, uh, I'll be brief. So in December, and I'll, I'll pass this out just to, as a refresher. In December, we were presented with a draft of the plan, given some time to look it over. To, uh, see if you had any questions. This, again, is just to recap, just kind of the quick notes of the plan. And then I'll talk about it real quick and. So, the three points on, on the plan that, that was presented in December, in December. Um, one, this was not, uh, it was never intended to be an end-all-be-all, and by what I mean, the plan itself wasn't intended to solve all the issues at hand. It was just supposed to be the first stepping stone in the progression moving, moving forward. The, the real work begins after this plan. So, so this plan was drafted based on the feedback that was provided by constituents, by community members, by council members that, that I met with. That's what went into the plan, where those six areas or so areas of priorities were drawn from. The real work began after this plan. So, so this plan is just a guideline of areas of interest to be able to move the city forward. But the next step, the implementation step, that's actually where the real work begins, and that's where things start to, to, to happen. So, the third part of it was that there was no project specifics recommended for, for one main reason. The capital improvement budget that Mr. Wright mentioned was a hundred and sixty-eight thousand for this fiscal year. He mentioned that there's fully designed projects on the shelf waiting for funding. There, there is no money for right now, moving forward, to be able to build out these projects that we wish we had. So instead, this process is more about, Mr. Penny actually mentioned it at the charter commission, the most recent one. Businesses wanna go to a location where they know that the city has their house in order. That they have a process in place. For example, you guys mentioned code enforcement issues, you mentioned, uh, forms to be able to go in and clear out land or, or demolish homes. That's what this process is for. This is to help get the, the, the city's house in order in specific topics, whether it's economic development, whether it's housing, infrastructure, transportation. There's even an item in there about culture, arts, because that's what people were saying is that Cautula doesn't have a lot of options for cultural events, for, for art events outside, you know, uh, uh, within the city. So there, there are all topics that would have to be addressed, that all kind of go into the quality of life, uh, issue for the city, which once, uh, businesses come, Mr. Wright and I have discussions, is what is there to do for people to want to move to San Antonio? When we talk about building hospitals or HEBs, we don't have housing. We, we do build housing, but do they actually have, you need to spend their money to stay in town? And part of that process was when we did the town home, we, we saw that a lot of the, the money was bleeding outside of Cautula, so other communities around Cautula. So other communities around Cautula were benefiting from the tax dollars, the wages made here in Cautula. And they weren't being captured. So that's what this plan represents. And this is just a condensed version. Like I said, you got the full version in December, but this was just to kind of refresh your memory. If we can, if we, council decides to move forward, I will work directly with Mr. Wright on finalizing everything, getting it printed out, getting a copy to everybody, but then to formulate an implementation plan afterwards. So whether that's internally staff, a staff member that you may have who could take this on and I can work with them to help kind of facilitate moving forward. Or if you decide to go outside of staff and hire someone to help implement the plan specifically to fit your needs. So one of the last things that I'll mention is that the chamber recently did a complete revamp of themselves. And I have to commend them for taking the leap of faith that they did to take on this plan. And one of the things that they've adopted or will be adopting soon is legislative agenda for the state and the federal level. At the state level, it includes the airport, because the airport is a huge economic generator for the city. And it also includes the foreign trade zone designation for its support. Whether you want to piggyback off of an existing one or whether you want to create your own, that legislative agenda supports the economic development of the city through the airport and through other means. So the chamber is going to hopefully be a tremendous partner in moving this project forward, as well as the Economic Development Corporation. The Economic Development Corporation, which is recommended on here, that it should be established with a full board and it should create regulations and policies to help bring in economic development, specifically incentives. Now incentives will always mean tax rebates, it could be waiving of fees, it could be helping move the process along. But before all that can be done is you have to have a process for everything. The process has to be followed. And everybody needs to know what that process looks like. So that's essentially what this project is, is to help get the house in order, if you will.
Real quick, Ernie, this economic development plan is a roadmap for the Economic Development Corporation. Currently, economic corporation for Cautula does not have a board. It is ran through the staff and the council at the moment. Every ten years, we are required to make this plan. So the last plan was made in twenty, sorry, twenty thirteen. So this was a necessary thing to be done for that and for the implementation of the Board Economic Development Corporation. But yeah, this plan is going to pretty much tell them how to move forward. So and it's approved by council and council should have input into it and how we want the future of our city.
When can we start to move forward? How soon?
Soon. So this is your first step and then we need to work on having a board established.
How many will consist of that board?
There are.
Probably seven.
Yeah, I think it's six or seven. I need to look back at it. We already have guidance on what to do and how to do it. So I read through it and it's been a while, so it is like six or seven.
Will that be selected or will be announced?
Originally, the board will be appointed by the council. After the board is appointed by the council, moving forward, the board will reappoint new people.
And the board will decide which direction they want to best for the city?
Yeah, it's advisory, but because they're not going to take no power from the council. The council is obviously going to vote on what their decisions are. So it is strictly advisory.
We'll accept what the advisor, we deny.
If we do go say yes right now, what is it consists of money wise right now?
As far as. Yeah, we're done.
We do approve it.
If you approve it.
For this economic development plan?
So it was already approved. Yeah, there's nothing more than.
Forty-five thousand?
There was actually forty and I think it was five in. Correct. But I think it's more like thirty-eight from what I've seen at this point.
Any other questions? Now I seek a first motion to approve item number eleven. First motion by Mr. Rodriguez, second by Mr. Saptucha, all in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Ernie. Thank you. Moving on to item number twelve, closed session, text government code and section five five one, decimal zero seven one. Consultation with attorney, five five one, decimal seventy four, personal matters. Letter A, appointment of assistant city administrator. It is now eight thirteen.
Alright everybody, it is now 9:24 we're into open session.
No action taken in closed session.
Is there a first motion to approve the city administrator assistant position with being able, David being able to negotiate a salary, bringing him in for a year with a contract that council can terminate at any time?
And that would be to bring who in?
And that would be to bring in Mr. Larry Doalina. So, is there a motion?
No motion for me.
Abstain, yeah.
It's to better to help you out.
Correct, it's a benefit to the city to help me with projects and different aspects that I feel I have holes in as far as what I'm doing.
Yeah, David still needs a little bit more training and he would be in for two days and not to run the city but to be able to help him with the projects at hand that need to take action on and get these projects on their way.
I'll make a motion to help out.
I'll make another, second and to help out.
First motion was made by Mr. Ayala, second by Mr. Rodriguez. Everybody say, everybody in favor say aye. It would be... Everybody not in favor say nay.
Nay.
Abstain.
I have one nay, the one nay is for Mr. Sartuche. One abstaining which would be Mr. Lopez. Motion carries. With the approval that David you would bring back to the council with a salary already?
I can't do that.
Okay.
I prefer it to be a council action.
Yes, excellent. Alright, and the final is to adjourn the meeting. It is now 9:26.